The agenda with Steve Payton is made possible through generous philanthropic contributions from viewers like you. Thank you for supporting TVO's journalism.
Tonight, why are so many school boards across Ontario in deficit? Then, the federal government's House leader joins us to discuss her party's precarious position in a minority parliament. That's next on the agenda. Multiple school boards across the province are in the red, and students are seeing the effects in staffing, program, and supply cutbacks. The Ministry of Education recently reported that 31 boards are reporting in-year deficits of $200 million. To help us understand why school boards are in the shape they're in, let's ask. Nathan Shan, he is the Chair of the Toronto District School Board and Scarborough Centre trustee, who's on the line from St. Louis, Missouri. In Scarborough, Ontario, Chris Bershowey, Queens Park Bureau reporter for the Toronto Star. And with us here in studio, Kathleen Woodcock, President of the Ontario Public School Boards Association, and Doug Little, editor of the Little Education Report, and a former Toronto School Board trustee, which is when I first met him more than 40 years ago, Mr. Little, can you believe that?
It flies by.
It does fly by. We've got to do this every time we do a story on education, because, in the interests of full disclosure, TVO is an agency of the Ministry of Education. We've been part of the province's delivery of distance learning since this place was created in 1970. Today, TVO offers online secondary school courses through the ILC, the Independent Learning Centre, and has been asked by the province to develop online courses for use by secondary schools across the province, so we put that on the record in the interests of full disclosure. Chris, you first. We need the background here. 31 school boards, $200 million in the red. How?
Well, you'll hear the Ontario government say that funding is at historically high levels, which technically is true, but the funding has not kept up with inflation. And I think that's where school boards are really struggling right now. For some school boards, they pay higher wages to teachers than the average, so that kind of deficit's already baked in for them. They've also seen some mandatory increases to Canada Pension, Employment Insurance, like, these are things they have to pay, and they haven't been properly funded for. So, you know, combined with the affordability crisis, which families are feeling the pinch, school boards are too. It's more expensive to heat schools and electricity and whatnot. So I think that's really why you're seeing a lot of boards, this year in particular, running into trouble.
Kathleen, you represent all the school boards across the province, so you've got a good sense of what it looks like out there. What's going on?
I'm going to defer to what Chris just said. Funding has just not kept pace with our costs. We are, like households, we are trying to pay for things and services that we have to pay for, and we are not being funded enough. And it's a gap that has grown over time, and it's chronic.
Chronic?
Yeah.
Didn't start today?
It did not start today.
So this goes back?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay, let's get to Nathan Shan on this one, because you represent one of the largest school boards on the whole continent. What's the situation in Toronto?
Well, it's a situation that is same, but amplified because of the needs within City of Toronto. As you can see, you know, OPSA, Ontario Public School Board Association, has calculated about $800 per student underfunding, and some of the other organizations, including Canadian Centre for Policy Alternatives, have gotten it almost twice that amount. So even if you take the $800 per student, you're looking at a population of 235,000 students within City of Toronto, with 42,000 staff and 580 schools. So it's the large school board, and so we are facing the issue at a larger scale. But also, City of Toronto, recently Social Planning Toronto released a report on child poverty within City of Toronto. So in addition to the regular flaws in the funding formula, we are also not being acknowledged for a city that is very complex and has a lot of socioeconomic needs and much more work to do. So over the years, as Kathleen mentioned, the chronic underfunding, you know, each year we feel like we're cutting on it a little bit, but over two decades, we've cut so much that we cannot recognize our schools when we go in. I, you know, I'm going back to the schools I've been youth worker in 20 years ago. I was a student, and going back and seeing the kind of underfunding and what it means to a school, like, when you cut at a micro level, it's taking away a teacher, makes a big impact in the school. Taking away caretaking hours makes a big impact in the school. So the money that's being cut may not be seen as proportionally high when we do it, but when you go into a grassroots level, at a school level, it is impacting. So it is something that we need to fix quickly, and it's a fix that the province can do if they calculate inflation.
Okay, well, hang on a sec, Nathan. We'll get to that in a second. Let me get Doug Little in here, because Nathan says he goes back 20 years. One of the reasons we wanted you here, Doug, is that you go back 40-plus years from your time as a trustee on the school board, when I used to cover your meetings back in the day. Compare now to the way things were. Was it better in your day?
It was better. There, in the mid-'90s, they had a report called the Red Wansky Report, that said it was scandalous that we were $1 billion short of what was needed for education. It's now $3 billion plus, that if you factor in, as Chris said, inflation and enrollment growth, there's three-and-change billion, arguable. And when you ask the government, they always quote "the dollar figure is larger than last year's dollar figure," but when you factor in enrollment growth and inflation, it's less.
Well, we've got these numbers here, so let me bring those up, and then I'll ask you to comment on them. We're going to show the school year, then we're going to show the actual per pupil funding, and then we're going to adjust it for inflation, and we'll see where that takes us. In 2018-19, the actual per pupil funding was $12,200-plus, and adjusted for inflation, since there would have been none that year, it's the same number. But let's go forward. 2021-22, yes, the per pupil funding goes up from $12,200 to $12,700, but when you adjust for inflation, it's actually lower. And then let's do a third year, 2024-25, the year we're in right now. Again, the actual per pupil funding has gone up to $13,800, but then when you adjust for inflation, we're actually lower than we were six years ago. We were at $12,282 six years ago, now adjusted for inflation, $11,506. Okay, those are the School Board Association's numbers, so Doug, you see those numbers. What story does that tell?
It's a priority situation. It always has been. I noticed that the school board funding in Ontario is now about 17% of the Ontario budget. Back in my day, it was 25%, before that, it was 30%. And it's gotten worse over time, and there's other things involved. Nathan mentioned poverty. There's a mental health crisis among young people that costs a lot of money, and it is still not well addressed. And it just compounds year after year. Ontario is in the bottom half by provinces of per student funding. It's a shame when one of the three half-provinces, as we call them, is in the bottom half. Alberta's terrible, but we shouldn't compare to the worst. We should, I mean, New Brunswick's ahead of us in per student funding.
In pursuit of funding.
Yeah.
Kathleen, you've seen those numbers. What story do you think it tells?
I think, I agree with Doug, that it does tell the story of priorities. And if you're not inputting the right amount of funding, you're not investing in your kids, and you're not investing in our future. And to pick up on what Nathan said, it's approximately a gap of around $800 per student. OPSA represents 1.4 million. So if you do the math, that's over $1 billion that is not coming into our system. So we need that in order to provide the proper and quality education that we know we can deliver.
Chris, I know you've talked to the Education Minister, members of the government about this, and they will say to you, and they are being accurate when they say it, our per pupil funding allocation goes up every year. Can you sort of pick that argument apart for us? Does that make sense as an argument, if you're a member of this government?
Well, yes, it makes sense for them, because the number is larger than it has been. But, you know, as we've said, when you factor in inflation and all kinds of other things, it's actually not. I mean, successive governments have put more money into education. For example, full-day kindergarten, right? Kindergarten kids about a decade ago were in school half the day, now they're in for the full day, which meant more teachers and more EAs. Certainly, there's been money put into more math facilitators. I mean, if you talk to the government, they'll say there's 9,000 extra education staff, 3,000 extra teachers, a lot of these are for literacy and things like that. So money has gone to targeted pockets. Special ed, I think, funding for that was up as well this year, transportation. But we still see troubles in these areas, so the funding is obviously not where boards would like them to be at this point.
Nathan, when you speak to the Minister of Education about these issues, and you point out this gap to her, how does that conversation go?
Well, we've had change in the minister recently, so we haven't really had, and I've taken this role recently, so I haven't had a direct conversation with the minister. But we have had consistent conversation with the Ministry of Education and ministers over the past few years as a school board. I think the main thing is, there's always the same narrative that we are funding more, but where is the priority? This is an investment, not an expenditure, and we see the announcement of $200 tax rebate, or whatever you may call it, going to even billionaires, and we're talking about children asking for this $800 at the minimum to be fixed. So where is the priority? And if you can get the priority right, if you can get this immediate support, the injection of this fund, the school boards can then breathe and start looking at new things and changing to all of the new policies and curriculum changes and all those stuff. We've been bombarded with different mechanisms of making things better. With this under, chronic underfunding situation doesn't give the ground support to do it. So I think that's what we've been saying. You know, the ministry's announcing great things every year, at least four or five new things, but we want to make sure that we can have the basis covered for us to be able to do all of those things. And that means this injection of the funding that is necessary across the province.
Let me pick up on that with Doug Little. And yes, Nathan's quite right, there is a $200 check going out to most people in the province of Ontario in the new year. That'll cost the Treasury $3 billion plus. They could have spent that, I guess, on education, but let me put an argument to you and then get you to react to it. My hunch is, the Minister of Finance is saying, if I give it to all the school boards, they're going to spend it on teacher salaries and principal salaries, and it probably won't get down to the classroom where it's needed, whereas if I just give everybody a $200 check, the Ford government will be covered in glory and get lots of credit for doing something. Discuss.
Good politics, not good policy. It's, a dollar invested in education will generate about $4 in economic activity. If you want the people in the northern Waterloo research area, and Carell and so forth, if you want the staffing for those things, if you want us to be leaders in a new high-tech economy, you invest in education. It's not a cost, it's an investment.
Kathleen, when you saw the news that a $200 check at the cost of $3 billion plus was going out to most of the people in this province, I'm trying to imagine what your reaction was. What did you think?
Well, without being rude, I will agree with Doug in that it is politics that is getting away, in the way of educating our students.
So if you had that $3 billion, what would you do with it, rather than mail a check to everybody?
Oh, I would spend it on services and programs in our schools. I would build better schools. We would have the ability to consolidate some of our schools. Right now, we have a freeze on the pupil accommodation review, and that is causing a lot of pressure on our budgets, because we can't look at some of our older buildings that really have lesser enrollment and should really be perhaps closed or consolidated with other schools, and we can build modern, energy-efficient schools for kids.
We did ask the Ministry of Education for a response to that which we are discussing here tonight, and here is part of what they said in a statement to us. The Ministry of Education response. "School boards should not," they say, "be recording deficits. Overall, school boards are in good financial health, with an accumulated surplus of $1.3 billion. But we're seeing a startling disconnect at some boards when it comes to financial management. We heard from parents that they do not want to see the same liberal track record of schools being closed across the province. We stand with parents and are keeping schools open at this time, with the expectation that schools act as responsible stewards of public dollars and balance their budget." Let's get some reaction to that. Chris, as you look at that statement from the Ministry of Education, what jumps out at you for comment?
Well, the one thing I do want to say is that in-year deficits are different than end-of-year deficits. So, you know, within the year, the fiscal year, the school boards might be running deficits, so 31 apparently are now. By the end of the year, we'll see where that number lands, because, you know, money is spent at different times throughout the year. That is what the government also recently argued at a committee meeting, that because of accounting practices, you may see deficits right now. You know, the one thing I did just want to mention when it comes to school board finances is, you know, the boards do say they don't have money. You know, with regards to the government, they don't do themselves any favors when we keep hearing about spending scandals, you know, with trips and things like that to, you know, there was one board, the Brandt Catholic Board, where four of six trustees went to Italy, spent $150,000, flew first class, stayed at upgraded hotels, bought religious statues. I mean, you know, on that front, you know, when the province says the boards need to be spending their money, I think that resonates with the public.
Kathleen, I should get you to comment on that, because obviously, those headlines do not help you when you want to make the argument that the system is underfunded. How unhelpful is that kind of conduct? That's a long pause, Kathleen.
Yes, it is. And it's really trustees and school boards across the province, trustees do want to, they are responsible for account, they're being accountable and transparent about how they spend the money that the government provides for education. There are times when sometimes having a trustee at the local level will help to make sure that that accountability and transparency is there, because you've got people that are local to the community, living, working, playing in your community, and they know the needs and the...
That's not the issue here, though. You know the issue. The issue here, Nathan, I'll go to you on this.
Yeah.
Okay, we understand that the trips to Hawaii look terrible, and the headlines are going to Italy to price out statues for schools. I mean, those kinds of stories look terrible, and admittedly, it's small potatoes when compared to the overall subject, but let's be honest, that does not help your case. Fair to say?
Totally, it totally doesn't help our cause. It totally doesn't do justice to the trustees who are doing massive amount of work for an honorarium across the province, you know, if you know how trustees are compensated. So it is sometimes, you know, the few examples that we have seen are alarming, but at the same time, it's not reflective of the work trustee do. You know, we post all of our expenses in Toronto District School Board online. I welcome anybody to come and look at our, you know, even $100 goes through so much thought before it's spent on some sort of a material for trustees and so on. So, you know, that is reflective of all the boards, most of the boards across. And so, you know, just like anywhere else, some examples can spoil it for everybody. And when you hear trustees, you're not hearing just about that board, everybody starts to assume it could be any of the trustees. But there's also a political reason for exaggerated focus on that, when we actually have a billion-dollar shortfall across the province, chronic underfunding. You know, when we talked about that $200, he said it goes to principals and teachers. We need principals and teachers. We have schools that are close to 500 people without a vice principal, where principals have to deal with all sorts of things under the roof. So I don't think we should disassociate money going to staffing, who are actually the face of our education on the front line. So I do think this is a bit of a distraction. It's unfortunate, it is actually not great news, but it needs to be held accountable. I'm all for greater accountability around trustee spending, but we have a bigger problem to solve, and we hope that focus stays there as well.
Doug Little, how much do those kinds of stories, and admit, I mean, we can admit this, the number of trustees who sort of abuse their position is a very small number. It's obviously not the majority, but when it happens, it makes headlines. Chris's paper publishes 60-point headlines about people taking trips to places they perhaps shouldn't. What does that do to the cause?
It hurts the cause. I wish those trustees wouldn't do it, but on a scale that we're talking about, somebody in the province wants $50 billion to dig a tunnel under the 401, where $3 billion's short in education, the scale is ridiculous. But somehow, we've decided that this is the issue, this little scandalous Italian trip. You can see that as the magician's distraction.
The magician's distraction, got it. Chris, maybe you could help us shine a light on something else that we hear about. And again, this is anecdotal evidence I'm going to bring forward here, and you tell me how widespread or relevant it is. You know, we do hear stories about when they need to change a pencil sharpener in a classroom, there's a huge process you've got to go through, and it ends up, you know, you can end up spending $150 for a pencil sharpener. Or, for example, if you've got to change a light bulb, there's a whole process you've got to go through, and it's not a matter of a $2 light bulb, suddenly you're into $100, this, that, and the other thing. Are the fixed costs within the school system in this province so out of control that the government has, in its wisdom, said, "This is one of the reasons we're not going to give you the money that you want"?
Well, this certainly is an issue for boards, and I think there is the sense that boards are overpaying for some things. I mean, certainly as an education reporter, and now at Queens Park, I still hear from parents about frustrations. And I mean, I remember hearing from one parent who said, "We just wanted to replace the carpet." The parents wanted to fundraise and replace the carpet in a kindergarten classroom, and Sears would do it for $1,500, but the board was saying, "No, you had to go with their contract, and it was going to be $6,000." So I think there probably is waste there that parents for sure feel very frustrated about.
Kathleen, why does this persist?
Well, boards have to follow certain rules of having vendor lists and these kinds of things for accounting purposes.
Who makes these rules, though?
The government.
The provincial government?
Sure.
So the province forces you to spend $6,000 on carpeting when parents could do it for $1,500?
That's what it looks like, yes. We, we're not, our only funder is the government, and they have rules around how we need to, there are accounting rules, how we need to put things out to tender, and we have to follow the lists that are the acceptable vendors that meet the criteria of the government.
But are those your rules or the province's rules?
It's in the legislation.
It's in the Education Act.
As far as I'm aware.
Doug, can you help us on this?
There are some times I can remember meetings where a contract would be tendered, and the staff would stand up and say, "Although the lowest tender is this figure from this company, we recommend you take this other company, because Company A did not meet the qualifications, did shoddy work," something like that. So you're not always taking the lowest bid based on your experience with different companies.
Nathan, how does it work in the Toronto School Board? Can you go with a lower bid if it's there?
We, if it's all, all the vendors are approved vendors, yes. I do, I do agree with the general feeling that we could do better. We could do better in terms of reducing some of the costs. But I also want to mention, one of the other considerations is safety. You know, it, you know, my, one of my parents' father could say that they could fix this thing, but who takes the liability if that gets broken? So there's a bit of a health and safety angle to it, labor agreement angle to it, and all of those things come into play. But, but I do agree, as a trustee, I'm constantly asking the question, can we do better? You know, bring costs to... But I have to say, you know, again, the pencil sharpener story gets talked about, but we know our teachers are buying their own supplies with their, elementary teachers are buying their supplies with their own money. So sometimes you get these stories, but the reality is different. Staff, elementary teachers are buying supplies with their own money. So we've got to keep things in context, but I agree, we have to do better in terms of how we, we have to still ensure financially, we have to still ensure health and safety and labor agreements, but could do better. And that's something that we can work together always, and we are improving. You know, as a board, we're constantly looking at it every budget.
Chris, you're down at Queens Park a lot. Gauge the temperature of the current provincial government. Is there an appetite, in your view, based on your reporting, to improve on the numbers that they're transferring to school boards now?
Well, certainly at the moment, the call is for transparency. I know the Minister, Jill Dunlop, the new education minister, was very upset about some of these spending scandals, the trips and whatnot. She said that long-term, the government may be looking at school board models, which may be, meaning looking at trustees. We're not really sure. That may have just been a snap to keep boards in line. But, you know, for sure, there are certain things that the government's looking at and wanting to improve. But, you know, again, their line is that they are spending more than ever in the history of the province.
And just to follow up, can you imagine the current government of Ontario abolishing school boards?
Personally, no. I know other provinces have tried it. I think it would be very difficult in a province the size of Ontario. I think, too, you know, having elected trustees and having school boards, there is, you know, you can be sensitive to local situations. Parents know they have an advocate. If they have a trustee, they can go to, as opposed to a bureaucracy.
Doug, can you imagine the province banning school boards altogether?
From a strictly political point of view, the school boards provide insulation from the province that they don't, if the province were to ban school boards, every problem would fall at Queens Park. People would be going to Queens Park, that Tommy's in the wrong class, I want him in the other class. Somebody's got to solve that problem. So the school boards, for, since they were conceived, have provided that insulation from the government. The government could, "Oh, that's a local decision? That's nothing to do with us," except they insist on being the only funder. So they don't want the responsibility, but they want to be the only funder.
I believe they are actually the oldest form of government we have in this country. Is that not the case?
That is true, Steve. We, school boards and trustees have been around since, longer than Canada's been a country.
Pre-Confederation.
Right, right. And so having those folks who do, as I said before, work and live in their community, they're at the local level, they know the needs of the communities, and, boy, oh, boy, and they're more accessible.
Well, here's where I jump in and say, yes, but, you could imagine a government saying, "Boy, think of all the bureaucracy we could get rid of, or think of all the expenditures related to trustees we could get rid of if we just, with a signature of the pen, decided to eliminate school boards." What would be lost if we did that?
A lot. And I just want to remind folks that the trustees, they get an honorarium. If the government wants to save a bundle of money on, by getting rid of trustees, I think they need to reconsider that, because the honorariums range, I don't know exactly the exact figures, but when you have a school board in the North with low enrollment, it may be, the honorarium may range from $5,000 a year to maybe upwards to maybe $30,000 in really large boards. I don't know.
Doug, I'm trying to remember, was it the Mike Harris government that actually put the cap on honorariums? I think it was.
Yeah.
So this is 30-plus years ago. They said the salaries were getting out of hand, and they capped it at $5,000. I think, Nathan, they've, they've increased it for Toronto School Board trustees. I mean, if you don't mind my asking, how much do you get paid?
Yeah, it's all through, through enrollment-based structure, I think Toronto District School Board right now, probably close to around $25,000 base trustee honorarium.
And how many hours a week do you work for that?
I mean, some of us, each trustee can do different things. Some trustees spend like 15 hours a week, some trustees spend five hours a week as a chair. You know, there's a slight increase, but chairs sometimes in large school boards are spending 20, 25 hours a week at the minimum. So for an honorarium, that, and, and the expenditure that's associated with trustees is also very small. We get about $10,000 per year for all of the expenses that are related to, you know, communications and everything else. So, you know, you don't really save much by, you actually would take on a lot more work. But I have to say, on that question, as trustees, I think we, you know, this is my personal opinion, I think we should be worried about whether we are going to be gotten rid of or not. We have a role to play as advocates, we'll continue to do that role, despite what the province decides to do, because that's what we signed up for, and it's not the honorarium. So our advocacy comes first and foremost for us, and we'll continue to do that, because that's, the position may come and go, but the role that we signed up for has to be kept intact.
Let's just, again, in our remaining moments here, two minutes to go? Okay, thank you. Let me put that to you, Doug. If you had, you know, that billion dollars or $2 billion that the three of you seem to be saying is the shortfall, the three of you who work in the system seem to be saying is the shortfall right now, what would you do with that money?
My first priority would be lower class size, as much as you possibly could, but the other people would have other priorities. You'd probably need it to keep the lights on and keep the heat on. We're down to that level, to keep the schools open. It's, it's not a matter of what extra would you like to have, it's a matter of keeping the ships afloat.
Chris, what are you hearing in your reporting about what the system immediately needs in terms of a cash infusion?
Yeah, I mean, I would say probably the money would just be used to cover the real costs of providing education. I'm sure school boards would like to have more teachers and more resources, especially, you know, the teachers' unions have for sure had a campaign about violence in schools and the needs for more supports, and especially for special education.
Nathan, let me give you the last word on this. If the province of Ontario, in its wisdom, decided to put an extra billion into the system, what would you do with it?
Directly to schools, you know, whether it be caretaking, to mental health support, teachers, small classrooms. We want to see it in the schools, we want to see it right there, being, making an impact right there in classrooms. So we need more funding for special education, underfunded, seriously. So, so there's a lot to be done. I would, I'll just finish off by saying that, you know, by enrollment, if you got those $800 per student, each school will be able to decide what makes the most amount of sense and give that autonomy to the schools to figure what works. and give that autonomy to the schools to figure what, what works a little bit better for them, and obviously keep it accountable. But I think different schools need different things, and we need to be able to be responsive for it.
Gotcha. Mr. Director, thank you. I was just going to ask you for a four-shot so I could thank all of our guests. Kathleen Woodcock, the President of the Ontario Public School Boards Association. Doug Little, you can read his wisdom in the Little Education Report, which is not an indication of its size, it's just an indication of its owner's name. Chris Rochaoui from the Queen's Park Bureau of the Toronto Star, and Nathan Chan, who's the Chair of the Toronto District School Board, what we used to back in the day call the Toronto Board of Ed. Thanks to the four of you for coming on to TVO tonight. We're grateful for your time. In Parliament, the government House Leader has an important job. She's got a stick handle the government's legislative agenda through the House. And when it's a minority parliament, as we now have, the job is even trickier. The Post is currently held by the Liberal MP for Burlington, Corinne Gould, and she joins us now from the nation's capital. It's good to have you back on our program. How you doing?
I'm good. Thanks for having me, Steve.
Not at all. Let's just start by looking at the state of play in the House right now. Is anything at all getting passed these days?
Well, some things, actually. So we passed the week before the last constituency week, S16, which is a bill for self-government for the Haida Gwaii Nation. And of course, pharmacare passed in the Senate earlier this month. But the House is kind of stuck in a privileged debate right now, which means that there's, you know, there's, there's a lot of debates happening, but it's not legislation.
Well, okay, do you want to weigh in and give us your take on why everything seems to be stuck right now? There is a procedural motion about documents, and it's kind of ground things to a halt. Let's hear your take on it.
Yeah, so look, I mean, this is the Conservative Party of Canada playing procedural games right now. We have actually already submitted almost 29,000 pages of documents with regards to SDTC, which is a former organization that was run by Parliament that was about greening the economy. You know, there were issues with it, and so the government actually wound it down and removed the board members and, you know, did a response, in response to the Auditor General. But the Conservative Party of Canada has asked Parliament to receive these documents to then send to the RCMP. And now Parliament has an extraordinary power to ask for documents from the government and from any organization. And, you know, we don't disagree with that. Where, as a government, we feel very strongly that this is not correct, is that this, these documents are not being used for Parliament's purpose, but rather they're giving them straight to the RCMP. And so this has big implications for the Charter and Canadians' rights, particularly to privacy. It also has implications when it comes to the independent work of the police, in this case, the RCMP. And it's kind of a backdoor way to get around due process. And both the RCMP Commissioner, the Auditor General, former Deputy Commissioner of the RCMP, and former law clerks in the House of Commons have all raised concerns with this and said that this is not an appropriate use of Parliament's power. So we have complied in the sense of submitting these documents, but in a way that wouldn't compromise police independence and in a way that protects the Charter rights of Canadians. And the Conservatives, instead of accepting this, have actually, are filibustering their own obstruction motions. So instead of going with the Speaker's ruling, which was to send this issue to a parliamentary committee to study it because there's no precedent for Parliament ever asking for documents for a third party before, the Conservatives have actually started filibustering and obstructing this. And that's where we find ourselves in, you know, this kind of continuous filibuster from the Conservatives is where we are today.
Well, let me play devil's advocate for a second here, which is to say, the Conservatives are using the tools that are at their disposal to do what opposition parties do, namely, I guess, bring attention to an issue that they find scandalous. And, you know, the government's own decision to ultimately wind down that Sustainable Development Organization and move the money elsewhere suggests that you acknowledge there were problems with it. So that's what they're doing. It's, I mean, it's a legitimate form of protest, is it not?
Sure, but the Speaker's ruling was that this matter should be referred to committee because it's the first time in Canadian history that Parliament is asking for documents, not for its own use, but for the use by a third party. And, you know, this is something that I think is an egregious abuse of power. And what they ultimately want is to go on a political witch hunt and to exercise their own partisan vendetta. And so, as you mentioned, the government acknowledges that, you know, this wasn't a great scenario, and that's why the organization was wound down. That's why, you know, it was, the board was let go. That's why we are providing the documents. We're just doing so in a way that protects the Charter rights of Canadians. What the Conservatives are asking for, in my opinion, and in the opinion of parliamentary legal experts, is just wrong. And I think one of the reasons why they don't want this to go to committee is because what they would hear from experts is what they're doing is an egregious abuse of power. And in fact, even the current law clerk at committee, when asked about this, said that he agreed with the concerns that were raised by the Auditor General and the RCMP Commissioner of the Conservative motion. And, you know, I would expect that if the Conservatives were in government right now and an opposition party were asking for the same thing, they would actually act in the same way that we are because I believe it's a government's job, and I believe it's the job of all members of Parliament and of parliamentarians to protect the rights of Canadians, to respect the independence of our democratic institutions, and to respect police independence. But what the Conservatives are doing is kind of breaking all three of those things. And I think that's completely inappropriate and something that we should all be alarmed about.
Now, a big part of your job, obviously, as House Leader, is to negotiate with your colleagues who represent the other parties in Parliament. And I presume those discussions are happening, and for whatever reason, you all as a group have yet to be able to find a way out of this. What do you think will get this unstuck?
Yeah, I mean, so as you mentioned, I'm having conversations on a regular basis with all of my counterparts. Look, I think when it comes to the Bloc and the NDP, they're quite intimidated by the Conservatives. And so they haven't been able to, you know, find the courage to stand up to the Conservatives because they're frankly intimidated by their bullying tactics. So there's only one party in Parliament right now that is actually standing up for the rights of Canadians and for democracy in that, this country, and that's the Liberals. But, you know, we are in constant conversation with the opposition parties about how we move forward. And there's a, you know, an elegant solution from the Speaker of the House, which is to move this to committee so that it can be studied because, again, there's no precedent for what the Conservatives are asking for. And in fact, the precedent that it sets is quite dangerous for parliamentary democracy in Canada.
Now, I guess I can say this. I've known you for a while, and I've known you to always be a person of temperance. And you're not one of these people who sort of flies off the handle and engages in a lot of deeply partisan rhetoric. But I have noticed lately, you have described the leader of the opposition as a fraudster and a bully, which is, which kicks it up a notch from what I'm accustomed to hearing from you. So I guess I got to ask, why are you using that language? And is it helping to move the ball downfield by using it?
Well, look, and I'm using it because it's true. Because what we have seen since Mr. Poliev has become leader of the Conservative Party of Canada is a level of toxicity and, you know, abuse of parliamentary power, as I'm talking about with you right now with regards to this motion of privilege. And, you know, a real kind of going after of Canadians. You know, we see this with people, regular citizens, who stand up and disagree with him. He goes after their, he goes after them personally. And I don't think that's okay. And what we see in the House of Commons is, you know, just this, you know, it's, it's never a place where, you know, things go smoothly, right? Like, that's not how the House of Commons generally operates. But the level of aggression and bullying that we see by his members of Parliament and by him himself is, you know, something that is at a level that I haven't experienced in the last nine years that I've been fortunate to be elected. And then the other thing is that he's, he sells slogans and not solutions, right? He, you know, this most recent thing about the Housing Accelerator Fund, which is a fund to help municipalities build the infrastructure necessary to build more houses, right? He's going after that, and he's going after his own Conservative members of Parliament for standing up for their constituents and standing up for their communities. And I don't, I don't think that's right. I think members of Parliament should be allowed always and encouraged always to be advocating on behalf of their communities. And so it's not even that he goes after members in other political parties. He even goes after his own MPs.
You know, it's interesting. We had a discussion about this very thing about a week or two ago on this program. And I asked a surrogate for the Conservative Party why Mr. Poliev conducts himself in the way he does. Let's just put it that way. And her response was, because our supporters love it. They love it when we stick it to you guys, meaning you, the government. And, and if that's the case, then, then his approach is not likely to change, which, again, raises the question, you know, how do we get this Parliament to work better together and, at the end of the day, make stuff happen? And I note that now that the Supply and Confidence Agreement with the NDP is over, I assume that's even harder to do anyway. So what's the way forward?
Look, I mean, I think part of leadership is, you know, the tone that you use. And you're right, I'm being more aggressive because I think that we need to point out when someone is being inappropriate and when they're using bullying tactics. And, you know, Mr. Poliev has always been an aggressive politician. But I'm not sure that that's what you need when you're leading a country and, you know, a G7 country like Canada, who has to, you know, also stand up for Canadians on the world stage, but also be an ambassador for Canada on the world stage, and who has to actually solve problems. It's easier when you're in opposition because all you have to do is point out, you know, what you think isn't going well. But at the same time, you know, if he's asking Canadians for their trust in order to govern, he also has to demonstrate that he can, you know, be a statesperson and actually deliver solutions. And right now, that's not what we see from him, and that's not who he is necessarily either. When it comes to the end of the Supply and Confidence Agreement, certainly that has caused, you know, a big change in this Parliament. I think we've been able to deliver really big things for Canadians because of that and provided some stable government over the last three years to Canadians in a time of big global upheaval and challenges in the economy and challenges right around the world. That being said, it just kind of brings us back to a normal minority Parliament. And you've been around for a while, Steve, and minority parliaments are kind of messy. You know, there's a lot of negotiation that goes on. And so instead of having one primary interlocutor, I now have three. And, you know, depending on what the issue is, we're able to move forward. I mean, on S16, I mean, that passed through with unanimous consent on support for Jasper. That passed through with unanimous consent. So we are still able to work together to advance files. And I know there are things that matter, both to the Bloc, you know, supply management, for example, in the Senate and Bill S282, and protecting that in future trade agreements. And so there's collaboration there. Of course, we don't control the independent Senate, but, you know, the government is very much committed to seeing that bill, you know, become law because we believe in it. We supported that as well. And then with the NDP, you know, we really need to make sure that those programs that we put in place, like childcare, like dental care, move forward. And the only way that we're going to be able to do that is if we can advance together in Parliament.
Well, in fact, I'm happy to put on the record that your Parliament, the current minority Parliament, is actually nudging up against an all-time record in Canada. If you want to find the longest minority Parliament that lasted, you've got to go back to William Lyon Mackenzie King's days, which is the early 1920s, three years, seven months, 20 days. If this Parliament lasts until May, you'll break that record. Do you think it can last until May?
I think it can. I, you know, it's, we're certainly operating under the impression that we are going to be lasting until next October. You know, that it's, it's tricky to do that, but we're certainly operating with that objective in mind. And as I said, you know, this minority Parliament has, has not necessarily been the norm in terms of the history of minority parliaments, but it's been very effective, and we've delivered a lot for Canadians through this time. And there's, there's still more to do in order to make sure that those programs and those policies that I know matter to Canadians can actually be delivered in a meaningful way, dental care being a really important example, you know, that we need to keep moving forward on. So, you know, lots of negotiation, lots of talking to do. But I am engaged in very constructive conversations with almost all of my opposition counterparts.
Let me ask you about the Prime Minister's options at this point because whenever he talks about this, he says he really looks forward to a clarifying election at some point down the road so that he can put his program forward and he can show up, in his view, you know, in his view, the leader of the opposition, and, and show how little there is there. That would be the Prime Minister's current view on this. If things are really bogging down right now, how about, how about having that clarifying election sooner rather than later? What's wrong with doing it sort of almost immediately?
Well, I don't think there's a big appetite for Canadians to have an election right now. I mean, I think, you know, they're, you know, it's going to be important for us to lay out what our future plan is in an election. And I think that there is going to be a very clear choice, you know, between two different visions for this country. One that is about inclusive growth, that wants to help Canadians through these tough times and see opportunity and success, which is our vision for the country. And then there's one that's going to be about cuts and austerity and getting rid of the government programs that Canadians care about. You know, we don't have to look too far into the past when Stephen Harper was Prime Minister for all of the cuts to programs and services that Canadians experienced. And what we hear from Mr. Poliev is that he's probably going to go even further and even deeper. And I think at a time of, you know, great global uncertainty, great instability in the economy, what we need is a steady hand at the wheel, and we need someone who has the experience to navigate through those stormy times. And particularly, you know, with the US election, you know, we have a Prime Minister, we have a Minister of Finance, we have a cabinet that has had a very successful relationship with President-elect Donald Trump. And, you know, I think it's going to be important for Canadians to make that decision as to whether they want to go with someone who is steady, who has stood up for Canada successfully, and who knows how to manage that relationship and how to protect the Canadian economy and Canadians moving forward, or someone who's pretty reckless and irresponsible and, you know, whose main point during the last negotiations when it came to NAFTA was about giving everything away to the Americans. So, you know, there's going to be an important choice moving forward. And, you know, we're going to trust Canadians to make that choice.
It is certainly fair to say that your government, when Donald Trump was in the first time, had a considerable amount of success dealing with that unprecedented challenge, if I can put it that way. It's also true that one of the people in his, I'm not sure if he was a cabinet minister, he might have been a special advisor, said that there's a special place in hell for Justin Trudeau. So you guys certainly had your, you had your moments in that relationship. Why would Canadians be wrong to think that if there's a populist conservative in the White House, maybe what we need in this country is a populist conservative to deal with that challenge slash threat?
Well, look, I think whatever decision Canadians make at the poll is the right one that Canadians are going to make, whether it's the outcome that I want or not. I certainly hope it's the outcome that I want. But, but at the end of the day, you know, I trust Canadians to make the decision that's best for our country. But what I think is really important is that now more than ever, Canadian values are needed here at home and around the world. And when it comes to standing up for Canada, for our economy, for jobs in Canada, And when it comes to standing up for Canada, for our economy, for jobs in Canada, it's this Prime Minister who did that very effectively when President-elect Trump was there the first time. We got a strong renegotiated NAFTA, we had the steel and aluminum tariffs removed, we were able to work constructively on a number of files and a number of issues, and that's something that I know that this Prime Minister can do again. And what I see with Mr. Poliev is that he is willing to sell Canada down the river at all costs, and that's not something that I think will benefit Canadians or Canadian jobs. You know, we had a very strong Team Canada approach last time, that meant that we strengthened NAFTA for Canada, and we have seen unprecedented foreign direct investment in Canada as a result of that, and we need someone who's going to protect it. Mr. Poliev calls that investment, you know, like government waste. He doesn't see the benefit in supporting our sectors and our industries and ultimately Canadian jobs, and that's something that I think, you know, for every Canadian worker should be really concerned. And that's, you know, that's why I called him, you know, a fraudster, is because he says one thing, where he says he supports workers, but when it comes to actually policies and programs, he does the exact opposite, that are actually going to hurt workers, particularly in Ontario, in our manufacturing sector, if, you know, Mr. Poliev were to be there, because he just doesn't stand up for Canadian industry and for Canadian jobs, and he would rather, you know, give that away to the United States.
Well, okay, a couple of things I got to follow up from that answer, then. Sell Canadians down the river is pretty tough rhetoric. Can you give me an example of how you think he has sold Canadians down the river?
Well, so when he talks about some of the investments that we have made in the green economy, for example, so in the auto sector in Canada, I mean, whether it's the Ford plant or the GM plant, the massive Stellantis plant...
You know what, can I jump in here? Forgive the interruption here, but I happen to have these numbers right here. So let me ask our director, Sheldon Osmond, to bring them up, because it does show your government's and the Ford government's support for electric vehicle investment in Canada. This is over the last four years. Sheldon, bring the numbers up if you would. Total investment, $52.5 billion. Federal support, about 60% of that, provincial support, about 40% of that. Those programs are in place, they have brought a significant investment into the country. Are you saying here categorically that you think if you don't win the next election and the Poliev Conservatives come in, that all of that is at risk?
Yes, I am, because he has stated that he doesn't believe in these programs, and he doesn't believe that this is a good use of government resources. That's thousands of jobs, Steve, that's not just the direct jobs in Ontario, those are the indirect jobs in the auto sector and adjacent sectors. And so, you know, if you are a worker in the auto sector, if you are a worker in manufacturing in Ontario, I think that he is putting your jobs at risk, because he doesn't believe in government support for these industries. And, you know, this is an example of where, you know, the federal and Ontario government have worked really well together to bring these investments to Ontario, to bring these jobs to Ontario. And we need to have a government that is going to stand up and fight for these jobs, whether it's in trade negotiations, or whether it's with regards to the transition to the green economy, and he says he doesn't believe in that either. So, you know, this, I think, is a really important point for folks in Ontario about our economy, to protect it, and we need a government that's going to do just that.
I'm keeping an eye on the clock for you, because I understand you have other duties that you've got to get to. So let me ask you one last question, and it's not going to be whether you think Justin Trudeau ought to lead the Liberals into the next election, you're part of his leadership team, so I'm going to assume the answer to that is yes. Here's the question I'm, here's the question I'm going to ask you. We just really saw a quite fascinating election in the United States for president. The Democratic Party did everything it could to point out how unfit Donald Trump was to be president, what a threat to democracy he was, and what he might likely do with programs that Democrats thought were important to keep around, and yet the American people did what they did. They not only made him president, they gave him the majority of votes, which I think a lot, a lot of people were surprised by. I am seeing echoes in what you've told me here today and in what others have said from your party, calling Pierre Poliev unfit, calling him a bully, calling him a threat to democracy, calling him a threat to slash and burn programs. I guess the question is, are you reconsidering that strategy or approach, given that we just saw it was employed down south and it didn't work?
Look, I mean, we're not in an election right now. I mean, right now, we are in government, and I think it's important for us to demonstrate what we are doing as a government and what the alternative would look like. I think during an election, it's really important that it's about the two visions, or it's about our vision that we are putting forward to Canadians and how that contrasts with the other political parties. Right now, you know, my job is to clearly demonstrate what is different about us as a government versus what is different about the opposition and what they are saying. But elections are always about the future, they're always about what the plans are for Canadians and for the electorate. And I, you know, think and know that what we will do during that election time is put forward that plan and that vision for the future for Canadians, so that they can make an informed choice.
That is the government's House Leader, Corinna Gould, the MP for Burlington, and we thank you very much for joining us tonight here on TVO. Be well.
Thanks so much, Steve, you too.
And that is the agenda for Wednesday, November 20, 2024. Tomorrow on the program, we'll look into the risks posed by head injuries for young athletes, and we hope you'll join us for that. I'm Steve Paken, thanks for watching TVO, for joining us online at tvo.org, and we'll see you again tomorrow.